I think they're decreasing the scope of work, but we're increasing by 4,000 bucks.
I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul is by phone. Commissioner Stephen Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Warren Robinson? Commissioner Josh Rudin?
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We are going to start with our invocation given by, where do you go? Stan Richardson, he is the president of the Almagordo Area Ministry Alliance, is/was/is? Can't remember, I'm sorry.
Till January.
Till January. And then we are going to follow up with Commissioner Tapley, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, thank you so much for our commissioners here who represent us, and pray that you would be with them tonight, give them wisdom and understanding in the things that our city needs and the citizens of our city need. And thank you for their hard work and their diligent service. We appreciate them, and just pray a special blessing on them during this Christmas season. In Jesus' name, thank you. Amen.
Show me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stan. Okay. We are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Didn't you want to pull item one?
When I get to consent agenda, I was going to approve it.
Oh, okay. I just didn't know if you wanted to take it off there.
I don't, we're going to pull item eight for question, but when we get to consent agenda, we'll just pull it? Or do you want to do it now?
You need to pull item one.
Eight, I meant item one, or the presentation.
Oh.
Commissioner Paul won't be here.
Yeah, I forgot. Commissioner Paul's not here. Sorry. I apologize. Yes, we do need to pull item one. I, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about item eight. Yes, Commissioner Paul is not here. We were going to recognize him tonight. We will do that in the first meeting in January. And with that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald, the second, from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please?
Commissioner Nick Paul, what is your vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem, we're just waiting for your vote.
It's not coming up again.
Okay. Are you voting?
Yes.
Okay, a motion passes seven zero. We will move on. We did, we did pull item one. I thank you again for that. We're going to move on to item two, recognition of Officer Eric Cisneros, Officer Neil Zek, and Sergeant James Watts for their exemplary actions on July 15th, 2023. And we have our Deputy Chief Glidden and our city manager, Acting City Manager Stephanie Hernandez.
So as many of you know, I was the Acting City Manager back when, on July 15th, when Officer Ferguson was shot, and the next day when he succumbed to his injuries. That day's hard for a lot of us to talk about. It was hard to live through it, but it was harder for those who were actually there that day. So I haven't really, I had to stick, I had to write something because it's, it's hard to, to put into words what that day meant to everybody. So I'm going to go ahead and read this. What I haven't previously conveyed is that we, we acknowledge the DA, we acknowledge a lot of people, but we didn't, we haven't properly acknowledged the extraordinary courage displayed by our officers that day. It deserves a huge amount of recognition. Officers Neil Zek, who was with us at that time, 18 months, Officer Eric Cisneros, who had just finished his fill training with Ferguson and hadn't even reached a year yet, and Sergeant Watts, who had been with the department at that time 15 years, and he had also been here when Corvina's was killed. They were the first responders on the scene. Under extreme conditions, including active gunfire, severe stress, and witnessing Officer Ferguson go down, they secured the scene, assessed the situation, performed lifesaving measures, and apprehended the suspect without any concern for their own safety. Their actions not only gave Officer Ferguson the best chance at survival, but also ensured a flawless scene so Ferguson and his family could get justice that day. During the trial, the defense found no grounds to challenge the handling of the scene, the handling of the scene until the police, the state police could come and take over. Our officers did exemplary work that day. This is a reminder that while we often scrutinize what our officers do, when it really counts, they were, they acted almost near perfection. I know it was hard, and there's a lot of things that stick out on that day. One of them was, we were in the APD conference room, and at that time, it was Lieutenant Glidden, said, "Our officers were rock stars that day." I couldn't understand what he meant that day till the trial, until I saw the footage myself. And I just want to recognize, Sergeant Watts couldn't be here today, but if Officer Cisneros and Officer Zek, if he could come through. Knowing that they were here, 18 months and 12 months, I think that speaks to the quality of training that we expect from our officers. It's unimaginable for me and most people to think of what they have to do daily and how they put themselves in danger. And I don't think that people recognize that when you call the police, every call could be dangerous for them. And I hate to put you two through this because I know you're living through it, but I felt that you guys performed just flawlessly that day. I heard in your voice how shaky you were, but how professional, and you captured the suspect and you brought him to justice. And I think that deserves recognition. And I hope that, and I pray for you, and I hope you guys can get through this. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the citizens for coming up, showing up, and taking care of our city. So I'm just going to read, they both say the same thing. Presented to Officer Neil Zek for demonstrating extraordinary courage on July 15th, 2023. Confronted with unimaginable circumstances, your actions ensured justice for your fallen brother and exemplified the highest standards of service and sacrifice. Thank you, sir. Officer Cisneros?
Same.
Let me read it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate everything you did for our department and for Officer Ferguson.
Thank you.
I'm going to hand it over to D.C. Glidden.
Yes, you guys can't leave just yet. Chief Cooney Arrow couldn't be here today, so I get the honor to give some awards out, recommended through chain of command and acknowledging these two heroes that you guys see up here, and Sergeant Watts, who unfortunately isn't here today. The first award is going to be a Meritorious Service Award. This award is presented for a highly unusual accomplishment under adverse conditions with some degree of hazard to life and limb to the nominee. This award is being awarded to Cisneros, Officer Cisneros, Officer Zek, and Sergeant Watts. And Lieutenant Hughes has them. He's going to give them to you after I read them all. Next award is a Chief's Accommodation Award. That is, Chief's Accommodation is presented for outstanding performance deserving of recognition by the police, Chief of Police. This award is being presented to Officer Cisneros, Officer Zek, and Sergeant Watts. The next one is the Exceptional Duty Award. This award is presented for a highly credible accomplishment, bringing public acclaim to the employee and department and the profession. And this is going to be awarded to Officer Cisneros, I'm having a hard time saying your last name, Officer Zek, and Sergeant Watts. The fourth one, it's Combat Cross. This award is presented to an individual employed by the department for an act of heroism at intimate personal hazard of life in combat, in combat with an armed adversary. This is going to be presented to Officer Cisneros and Officer Zek. And the last one, gallantly star of excellent arrest. This is presented for an act of distinguished bravery in the arrest of a person who is a major threat to the welfare and the community of the officer. This is going to be presented to Officer Cisneros. I thank you for what you guys do. I know it was super hard to be up here today, to relive this, and you guys are rock stars.
Okay. We're going to move on to item three. Presentation on the Tularosa Basin Regional Dispatch Authority, end of year wrap-up. We have the Director of PSAP here, John Barney, who's going to do his first presentation to the city.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing?
Good, thank you.
So I was asked to come to give just a, kind of a report of our end of the year, and we still have a couple more weeks for call statistics for the end of the year, but from what we were able to gather, one was that last week I gave it, so we're at three weeks. And then I did just pull phone data just now, so we'll have actual phone data of, as of right now. So just to kind of give you brief background, we are established through a JPA with the county, the city, and the Village of Cloudcroft. We are a public safety answering point. We are a primary public safety answering port, point for all of Otero County. Tularosa does have a, they're considered a secondary PSAP as they don't handle 911s, and also the reservation, Mescalero, does have a 911 center. They are also considered a PSAP also. We were created in 2021, but we went live August of '23 in the center. We did merge, or we went under all of Tularosa Basin Regional Dispatch Authority, July of '23, and we actually went into our new building in August of '23. We do have a board of directors, four from the county, four from the city, and two from Cloudcroft. Our funding is currently split 50/50, and after that, it's going to be based off of calls for service, and the fiscal agent is the county. So just kind of go through of each departments or call lines for everything. So the Almagordo Police Department handled, as of last week, 34,000 calls, which will include, and I should say, Almagordo Fire Department did about 1,700 calls that included 911 hangups, fire alarms, traffic stop disturbances, traffic crashes, structured fires, fraud, juvenile issues, stolen vehicles, and mental health welfare checks. Those are just some of them. These are the top calls that we respond to on a daily basis. For Otero County, the Sheriff's Office did about 30,000 calls. They do obviously have a lot more jurisdiction, and we do assist Tularosa Police Department with a lot of their call volume as they, we're having trouble with officers and hiring officers. And we do back up Cloudcroft a lot. And the whole county, fire, and EMS, all the volunteer agencies, 18 volunteer agencies across the county did about 7,200 fire and EMS calls. And just quickly, based of what we see EMS, we do a lot of search and rescues up there. We have been seeing a lot of suicidal calls, suicide ideations, and suicide attempts. And our crime has gone up, so we have been seeing a lot of stabbings and GSW gunshot wounds lately, which is very unfortunate. Cloudcroft, a little less call volume inside the village. PD's done about 1,000 calls. Fire and EMS has done about 287 calls. Same thing, but they do see more parking complaints, property damage, as they are inside the village. We do have a lot of fire alarms up there, and then they, the Village of Cloudcroft EMS and Fire, they do some mutual aid for James Canyon, Hyrolls, and those little subcategories. Just other phone calls, or I should say, call volume for, for us, which would include Tularosa, the DA's office, US Forestry, livestock, game and fish, and National Park. We also do take phone calls for Doniana County, as Chaparral is split between Doniana County and Otero County, and we do handle some calls down in El Paso. Some El Paso 911s do roll up to us, so we do handle those. But for those calls, about 3,700 and 155 EMS calls for those areas of those dispatch. And then just quickly, before we go through this, just phone statistics for the year so far. Our 911 calls for the whole year, we did about 28,544 911 calls as of today. E70s, we have a dedicated phone line that comes into the 911 center for our law enforcement officers, so they don't have to hit any auto attendant or anything like that, rings directly into the 911 center. We've processed 13,821 calls from our law enforcement officers. And then our admin lines, we did 100,458 calls with a total of 142,823. I'm estimating by the end of the year, we'll do about, close to about 150,000 calls in total for, into the 911 center. And that does include our abandoned 911 calls also. So challenges we faced during our, our merger, a brand-new center, so building from the ground up was a huge play into everything. We built the center from the ground up, new infrastructure, new technology, new staff, new leadership, along with just a new layout of how our center was going to operate. We have improving a high-efficient standard workflow as we were trying to build standards, so we were making sure we were following NINA standards and APOC standards, which is the national program that runs the 911 system. They have standards that we have to follow, along with NFPA, which is fire department standards. We have standards in, inside of that dispatch needs to follow. So getting into those standards was a challenge and education on that with the dispatchers, along with our leadership staff, too. Training gaps, we noticed that there's some, there's some training gaps, especially when we did merge from Almagordo Police Department and Otero County Sheriff's Office. But one thing we did when we did that was we cross-trained prior to the merge. So we had Sheriff's Office dispatchers come over to the police department, police officers, dispatchers come over to the Sheriff's Office, so we started to cross-train. So it wasn't just like we were thrown into the 911 center when we merged. And then QA feedback. We noticed that when we were doing quality assurance, quality assurance is actually standard. We have to do 7% to 10% of our call volume on a monthly basis for our EMS calls only, and then we obviously add more for our law and fire calls. And we noticed that it was constructive feedback on how to process these calls, professionalism on the phone with our callers. We noticed that some of the feedback was not receptive, and we had to help change that mindset, that this is not a disciplinary action, this is to help improve you guys so we can have more professionalism in the 911 center and process these calls faster, so we get help to them faster. So with all that, we have improved since that year. Just to kind of give you a staffing structure, we're very similar to the Sheriff's Office, police department, fire departments. We have myself, the 911 director. I have my deputy director, Hilton Chapman. My operations manager, who handles all operations in the 911 center, Amelia Burr. We have four shift supervisors, which is new to the 911 center. We are able to add growth into the 911 center, so we have four shift supervisors. And right under them, we have lead dispatchers. We do pay them a dollar stipend more an hour, but it's a mentoring program to start gaining the leadership skills for them. As we all say, we're not going to be here forever, so we need to keep bringing up our, our new people so they can run the center eventually. So we do have four that follow each supervisor as a mentoring program. We have eight communication officers in total, 17 dispatchers. We have two quality assurance, quality assurance and training people. And then we have two NCI seen records. Those two NCI seen records handle all records through all three courts that we handle with, along with, with radio transmissions that we have to pull from records requests from the public and/or officer requests. All officers fill out a form, we pull them, that stuff for when they go to the court, and they have to have the recordings. So they, they are very busy. We roughly enter about 70 to 100 warrants on a weekly basis between all three courts. So they are a very busy department. And then one thing we did find out was the public misunderstandings, educating the public in the roles of what our 911 center was. So we were participating in a lot of community education and going to a lot of events. No one knew who Tularosa Basin Regional Dispatch Authority was. They didn't know, they didn't know that we consolidated from two 911 centers to one, and why we merged, and understanding that you call one center, you have to get transferred. It's a faster process. Things that we have accomplished, which I'm very proud of, we built policy development, so we rewrote a lot of our policies, a little bit structured and protocols. We implemented a new emergency medical dispatch program, which provides a high level of medical care to people that are calling into 911. Prior to that, we weren't able to do aspirin protocol. We weren't able to give Narcan. We couldn't assist with an EpiPen. Now we can under our medical director. So before the ambulance gets there or fire department gets there, we can have, for especially chest pain incidents, we can have the caller take aspirin to try to relieve the pain before the ambulance gets there and start some basic care. So that's a huge success for us and building policy around that. Growth in the leadership, and just in growth in general, we have a lot better structure. We also obviously built our leadership, so we built a mentoring program behind that, so we can start growing people to become leaders. And we're obviously sending them to lots of training, or training and getting them certified as, through APOC, they have a supervisor course. And then obviously, like I said, our new EMD program that we purchased, that we're under. We have been working with a lot of other agencies, MERVDA, which is Mesia Valley Regional Dispatch Authority out of Doniana, Ria Doso Police Department, their 911 center, they are our backup center, so if we ever go down, our 911s roll over to them. We have worked with Mescalero, and we do work very closely with El Paso 911 also. And we just submitted for APOC 33 training program. It's a accreditation, to get accredited through APOC stating our training program is what meets their standards. What we're looking forward to next year is more leadership development, training leaders. I've gone to a couple leadership classes that I would like to get our staff and our leaders through. Very good programs, and you actually learn more about yourself as a leader than how to, taking those skills and now implementing them into the 911 centers. Staffing and recruitment, we're still working on it. We currently are down seven dispatch positions. We're fixing the process, five people into the 911 center starting in January, so that will be a huge success for us, is bringing a group, a group of people in here. Keep partnering with our agencies across the state of New Mexico. We, I'm not sure if you have heard, but we are working with Mescalero. Currently, they have reached out to us to take over their fire rescue and their conservation. So we are in the process right now to work with them so that we will be dispatching them and taking primary 911s on the reservation. So that is, that's in the works currently. More community outreach and more education. We've released two videos last year, one just a recruitment video and the other one about who we are and what we do and as we're dispatchers, as our dispatchers are humans, too, and just like our officers go through it. We are the first line and first people that we recall. As I always say, the one person that calls in is having a bad day. Our dispatchers have multiple bad days because they take those 911 calls from everybody that's calling that's having a bad day. We become, we become part of that bad day. So our dispatchers do go through a lot. We have implemented a peer support program internally, and we have sent them to peer support classes. We are still working on some technology upgrades to enhance staff training, streamline protocols and efficiency, and even dispatch operation on the fire and EMS side. We keep on fostering transparency and respect with our teamwork, building that respect and culture within the 911 center is what we're always going to continue to do. Training programs, as we're building our new training program, we are trying to do some scenario-based drills and training as we keep up our dispatchers. We are just about done to launch our backup center down at the Emergency Communications Center, or EOC, under the county. That's going to be a backup center for us, so we'll be working on training on if we have to ever evacuate our primary center, how we operate down there. So that center will be up and running, and we always can use it for natural disasters or anything along those lines. We'll have that center up and running. So that, that's just about done. We have a couple more things to fix on that, and we're going to use that as our training, like training lab, where we bring our new hired dispatchers and we'll work down there, and we can actually full operation down there, and it's seamless. So that's, that's really cool. And then obviously, continue to research projects and how can we implement and better the center, along with just fostering new people and growth in the 911 center and continue our mentorship. And other than that, I open it up for questions for you guys, if you have anything about the 911 center.
I have a question. Where are you located?
2351 Eddie Drive, right behind Colicche's.
And would you encourage tours if one of the council members wanted to come see it?
Yes, sir. If you just reach out to us, admin@tbrda.org, or just give us a call and ask to speak to myself or the deputy director. We'd love to set up a tour for you guys.
Very impressive. Thank you.
We actually are, and if you guys are available, we're holding one at 10:30 on Monday with the Mescalero Tribe on the 23rd, so if you're available to stop by, they'll be, they'll be onsite at 10:30, if you want to meet the tribal council members, too.
Thank you.
It's quite a setup.
Yeah, I want to go see it.
Yeah, it's really cool.
John, can you just kind of explain what a quality assurance is?
Yeah, so quality assurance, pretty much what we do is we have a list of questions from APOC, which is asking us if we're verifying the address, verifying a phone number, and those two are the most important things. It falls back in the old aspects of 911 when we used to call 911, we didn't get data from cell phones or an alley, which is the, the mapping features that we receive in the 911 centers. But what we do is we, quality assurance, making sure that we are following protocol, make sure we're following procedures, making sure we're treating our customers, because they're customers to us, with respect, and then also making sure that we're gathering the information for the officers or fire and EMS. So quality assurance is we randomly pick random calls, and we just quality assurance them to make sure that dispatchers are following everything, and we're, they're being held at the highest standard. So that's what quality assurance is. And it's on a scoring base. We do have 85%. They need to pass within 85%. If not, we do counsel the dispatcher if they don't meet that 85% on one call.
Thank you.
If no other questions, thank you so much.
Anybody else? No?
Thank you.
No problem. Enjoy your night, guys.
Okay. We're going to move on to public comment. We have one person signed up, Joshua Ramsey. Just as FYI- Just as FYI, you have three minutes, and it is not an action item, so we cannot have a back and forth discussion. And if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Ramsey. Mayor Payne, Mayor Pro Tim McDonald, and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. First, I want to clear up any rumors or misunderstandings about my position regarding the water rates and proposed infrastructure improvement. As I have stated many times and to most of you, improvements to the water system are urgently needed. I understand that this was not a problem created overnight, and unfortunately, this problem has been festering. Alas, it has burst. The question before us is how do we fund the $160 million needed for improvements while causing the least harm to our community members? I have heard this discussed as $30 a meter, which I believe is a disingenuous way to examine this problem. We know that every dollar spent locally multiplies itself as it moves through our community, and this reduction in total purchasing power for our community will negatively affect our local economy. As I'm sure you all have heard, constituents around the city, including myself, were alarmed when we received our water bills for July. While the constant and pervasive communication coming from the city was a 30% increase, many accounts saw much more significant increases, especially high-usage consumers. My bill more than doubled. After the initial shock wore off, I started asking questions and researching. After diligently studying the government rates proposal, or gov rates proposal, I have some concerns. The purported 30% increase was only part of the story. Due to the alteration in wastewater billing, the actual hike for mid-tier users was a substantial 46% from the outset. But what about the high-usage consumers or commercial accounts? Why was there no modeling done to demonstrate how these changes would affect them? While they may only represent a small percentage of users, they are significant economic generators for both services and jobs in our community. My remaining concerns are twofold. First, I understand that the budgeting and bonding requirements force us to have a five-year plan regarding loan repayment. However, why must we accomplish this $160 million renovation in five years? Can it be budgeted out in seven or maybe eight years? Could this be funded through the revenues for the other system purposes that's listed on the gov rates proposal that totals $50.2 million over the next eight years? I know you're voting tonight on a loan to begin the work. Can we please, however, look at income compared to budgeted this spring before the July 25 increases occur? This would allow the commission to see if it's possible to do less harm to our community financially and still accomplish the needed goals of the reinvestment. Lastly, irrigation customers account for one-tenth of 1% of total water usage for the community. Can these customers, who are willing to invest in green spaces to beautify our community, just pay the same rate as everyone else? The current rate increase represents a 275% increase over previous costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the City Managers' Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners. I just have a quick report. I just wanted to kind of go over the projects that are happening within the next couple of weeks. We got a bunch of them going on, and I just kind of wanted to give you guys information on them. We have the Montevista Cemetery, the interest renovation, that was ICIP money, that's starting on January 6th. The IT infrastructure, that is being funded through, I think, ARPA funds, yeah, ARPA funds. We're putting infrastructure up at the zoo. The 10th Street Bridge, this is this one right down here, that one has started and it's going to be completed about April-ish. The New York SMP, which should be completed around April-ish as well. We have great blocks that they're going to start digging up on January the 13th. The Hubbard Bridge replacement, so that's bridge replacement and the water line, that's going to also happen on January the 6th. We have the Oregon SMP going on, that's going to start, I believe, tomorrow. That's water line replacement. We have Lower Heights that started today, I believe. It's the water tank that's up on Thunder Road. And then also, I just wanted to let everyone know that tomorrow, we're doing the bid opening for the golf course. So that's all I got.
That was a lot. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the City Commission.
I was going to ask staff, kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Ramsey mentioned, sometime in maybe March of next year, if y'all could put together some sort of a presentation, because we'll have some real numbers and real data on the water rate increase of what we're actually generating money-wise and what we need to service the debt for what we're doing, and then see, you know, that would give us plenty of time for the commission to make a decision whether the July increase of next year needs to happen or if it could be pushed off a year.
So we actually are contracted with our, with Brian, and he, we were trying to get it sooner, but he wants to get as much of a year as he possibly can. He's our consultant, I'm sorry, Brian, not the former City Manager.
The one out of Florida or whatever?
No, Mance, Brian Mance. Brian Mance, our consultant, that did the original study. He, he wants a full year of data, so we're going to try and get something in there to see how much it is generating, if the projections were accurate, if they were on target, if they, they were. So we already have that in place to come, to do the analysis and come before y'all.
When, when do y'all have it?
I think he said April-ish. Is that when we were discussing April, April-ish? Yeah.
April, okay. That'd be pretty close.
He wants to get as far, as far as the year, because anything else was kind of, it's going to be higher in the summer, it's going to be lower in the winter, spring is going to kind of be average. So he wants to get as much of that year.
And we'll have what, 10, like eight or, eight or nine months of data by that time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Anything else? No? Well, we had a lot going on this last couple of weeks. A lot, I feel like. I feel like I didn't get a day off in the last two weeks. Christmas parade was well-attended. If you were out there and saw the, I have to give a shout-out because it was incredible, the monster industrial supply float. How many of you saw it? Okay. I know, I saw you, actually. You missed something cool. That was like, oh my gosh. That was so cool. Anyway, and I, and I bring that up because they clearly invested a lot of time and a lot of money into that float, and they deserve recognition for it because it was pretty spectacular. They even made it snow. So, yeah, it was very cool. We had the Christmas tree lighting. We had Christmas on Main Street, for those of you. I went down, no, Dustin was there, I saw him. Christmas on Main Street was very cool, considering that New York Avenue was closed off. They made it work. So congratulations to Alamo Gordo Main Street for that. And all of those events were incredibly well-attended. And I, I still laugh at the people that say there's nothing to do in Alamo Gordo, because there's a lot to do in Alamo Gordo, and there's been a lot the last few weeks. So shout-out to everybody that was involved in that, our city employees, and especially our city employees, and like I said, Main Street. And, yeah, it was a good time. And so, yeah. And I know they had a play at the Flickinger, they had a Christmas Carol.
Christmas Carol.
Yes, a Christmas Carol, yes. It was good, it was good. So, anyway, a lot going on, and a busy time of year, but, but a fun time of year, so. And that is all I have. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. I know we want to pull Item 8 from the consent agenda. I think there's some questions about that. So with that, if nobody has anything else, if I can get a motion to approve Items 4 through 7 on the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tim McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please?
It chooses when it wants to come up.
Commissioner Paul, how do you vote?
Motion passes 7-0. We're going to move on to items pulled from the consent agenda, Item 8. I think we all probably have a question on that one. Sure. Just a basic, why the change order?
Yes, so, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners, this is for the Gear Out Energy Services Company, the retrofitting and energy efficiency upgrades that they're doing for us throughout the city. So this change order came about kind of two ways. They are transitioning pretty much all of the lights through all the buildings in the city to LED. Some of the buildings had already had rooms that had transitioned, had certain areas that had transitioned. We had a couple buildings that were mostly LED. So when we started looking at it, what we realized is we had a lot of different types of fixtures, like a lot of different types of fixtures. So when the opportunity came up to de-scope some work from the original scope of work, which is the 363,551, and then also come back in and standardize our lighting throughout the city so that we could have the same type of light fixtures, the same type of ballast, the same type of things, so that facility maintenance did not have to stock so many different varieties. This is also going to retrofit some of the lights at the library, where they were just added, basically kind of put on the drop ceilings. This will allow those to actually be fitted into the ceilings and provide a much better, much more updated look. So what we are doing with this change order, we already did with some of the other change orders, is we de-scoped some of the solar that we were going to do because it was going to be roof-mounted, and the roof was not capable of handling that. And then de-scoping some of the heaters that were not going to be applicable for the Wi-Fi thermostats that we originally thought they were going to. And then adding back on the standardization of the fixtures, City Hall Civic Center, Library, Senior Center, Senior Fitness, Police Office, Police Department Office, Fire Stations 1, 5, 6, and 7, and adding 5% attic stock for the fixtures. So that's what this change order does.
Do you have any idea how much this is going to save us over the long run?
So the, this change order specifically does not change much in our energy savings guarantee because most of what we're changing had either already been changed to LED lights. It will save us a little bit because they're older LED lights for upgrading to newer ones. But in itself, this change order doesn't do a lot of energy savings. The project overall does a huge amount of energy savings.
Where are we pulling this money from to pay for?
We are pulling this money from Fund 49.
Any other questions? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Item 8?
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Robinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Burnett. Can we put up the vote, please?
And Commissioner Nick Paul.
Okay, a motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
I'm Item 9, so I'll just say.
Yeah. I just started to say you might as well stay here. We're going to move on to Item 9, Consider an Act Upon Ordinance 1706 for Final Publication, Approving a Loan Agreement in the Amount of $32,500,000 with the New Mexico Finance Authority for Repairing, Replacing, Extending, and Upgrading Water and Sewer Infrastructure.
So Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners, this is the ordinance that first came to you in August to allow us to apply for the New Mexico Finance Authority loan. I have Chris Muirhead with me from Modrell Spurling to answer any technical questions that you have on this funding. But this is the first of the long-term debt that was part of the water rate study, and allows us to start making a headway on our water and sewer infrastructure, along with the cash-funded projects that we're doing. And then obviously, you know, we continue to always look for other funding sources, including federal grants and state and local grants. So any questions for myself or for Chris? We're here.
Just real quick, I sent an email, but I wanted to put it on the record. I, it was my mistake, I forgot to put what this is financing. So I just kind, I sent the email to the commission separately earlier today. But just for the record, anybody at home listening, what, the first round of financing, we will be doing the 70 grid replacement, that's out off of Walker Road, Granada Hills Water Distribution System, the La Luz Raw Water Reservoir, two intake towers and a cover replacement, the Callahan Ground Storage Tank, the Lower Alamo Ground Storage Tank, the Lower Acateo Ground Storage Tanks, the West Side Elevator Storage Tank, and Upper Height 16, 16-inch Transmission Replacement, Zone 1 Realignment, and then a sewer project. We have Indian Wells Road, 16th Street to White Sands in Florida Fasing. So I just wanted to put that out there so that it's on the record that that's what this money is financing.
Does anybody have any questions? Nope. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Item 9?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tim McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? I told them we need to play the Jeopardy song while we're waiting for the vote.
And Commissioner Paul.
Aye.
Someday I'm going to surprise them and just do it. And motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to Item 10, Consider an Act Upon the Phase 1 Design for the Fairgrounds Road Extension to the Railroad Tracks Encompassing Traffic Study and Signal Upgrades to Facilitate Traffic Flow to the Bypass.
Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioners, due to possible future development in the area, I'm requesting for permission to proceed with necessary studies and design to facilitate the transition of Fairgrounds intersection from a three-way to a four-way stop.
So, that was fast. So there has been plenty of discussion. The scenic extension happened, and there's been plenty of discussion about extending Fairgrounds Road to the bypass. We're not at that point yet, but looking forward, we know that the bypass is an area that we want to develop, that we want to look at getting railroad stubs, all of that going in there. We want to start the first phase of this, and this is kind of just upgrading that intersection. The intersection is 35 years old-ish, and it's due for an upgrade. So since we have to upgrade it anyways, we're looking to see if we could do a four-way, a four-way stop at that area.
Okay, so this is not...
This is back in like 88 when...
So this is not going all the way out to the bypass?
No, what we're requesting...
Right away.
Yeah.
Right now, it's just study for the lights.
Exactly. We're just requesting permission to go and do the upgrade of that intersection because it, it needs upgrading anyways because of the age of it, and we're just requesting to do a four-way stop at that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to any of that. I was just thinking how long it took us to get Union Pacific to play along with what we did do. So I was like, did some like Christmas miracle happen that I don't know about?
Not yet.
All right, well, maybe next Christmas, right? Just kidding.
What's this going to cost us? So basically, you're just, you're going to start the design?
Right, so I didn't want to get a proposal or anything like that from Lee Engineering, which is usually our company that we use for a traffic study. I just need approval for this so I can actually proceed on getting proposal and to make sure it's worth actually pursuing. So once I get a proposal and everything like that, then we'll start the traffic study, and I'll be able to update you guys on pricing of the study. Then, once they do the study, then they'll kind of give me like an EOPC, which is an estimate cost, and that'll basically tell me how much the intersection would cost just for the lighting. Because that's all we're focusing on is the traffic study for the lights and to replace the lights to make it a four-way for future development going west.
Hey, just a, just a quick question. I guess I, what does it take to just upgrade an intersection?
I mean, what is, what is the job scope?
So are you talking about the construction part or the study part?
No, I'm just talking about, you're talking about it's getting old and it needs to be upgraded.
Right, so you would have to replace the entire arms on all the lights?
Okay.
So probably, I would estimate, not estimate, but estimate about maybe two, three-hundred thousand dollars, probably around, ideal is what it would probably be about, and that's without the study. And the study just depends on how long we want to, because on the study part, you could do basically like monthly, or two months, or three months. And what they do is they check and see how much traffic comes in each direction. And then, once they do that, then they'll go back and put it in again, and pretty much get an idea of how much cars might come in from the west side, or go to the west side, and then they'll incorporate that into their study. And then they'll kind of see if it's worth putting in a certain kind of lights or arrows, or however they feel like is best for that. And then they'll give us our determination on how we're going to do our lanes for that.
Is that what you were asking, or were you asking what constitutes?
What, yeah.
What constitutes an upgrade?
So it appears to me that maybe the arms are getting fatigued and, I mean.
Yeah, well, I mean, the last time they were ever put in was back in eighty-eight.
Okay, so they don't last forever.
So that's older than me.
Does the state have anything to do with this? I mean, because.
You will have to, we would have to get a permit from NMDOT, just because it is on the right-of-way. But something like that isn't an issue on the study part, because we could do the study without permit. They just basically look at the, because you know how they have the cameras on theirs to let you know when it turns green and red and all? They'll just look at that and study it. When the construction part comes, then that's when we have to get the permit to replace them. But I don't think it would be a big issue at DOT to replace arms that are like thirty-five years old, so.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Will the design of this include factoring in that if the Fairgrounds Road does at some point in the future cross over and tie into the bypass, that whatever works being done on the signal upgrades meets the requirements that would be needed for that road to pass across those tracks? So that we're not having to come back and spend additional monies two, three years down the road to upgrade signals again?
Right, so when it comes to that part, once we're done with the traffic study, then when we get closer to the construction part, I will basically be talking to whoever the developer is, making sure that whatever they built, you know, find that agreement to where we do lights, they do road, but basically make sure elevation matches the right-of-way for the train, matches the intersection on Fairgrounds and White Sands. Is that kind of what you're asking for?
I think what he was asking is.
It's kind of hard to hear him.
Will the design of that, the light, be able to handle the volume of traffic in the event?
Well, that's the whole point of the study, and then if the study does approve on that, then whoever the developer is, I'll make sure that I incorporate what they're proposing on their road, and then I'll make sure that it's part of the study, so that way, basically, I'm going to make sure that everybody's involved in this communication to where there's nothing left behind, because I always plan ahead instead of in the present, so.
So when we go into this, that's one of the things that we're going to be presenting, that we expect this to go across the railroad track and to tie into the bypass similar to the scenic extension. So that'll be communicated, that that's the intention of this. That's why we're upgrading it. This is why we are looking to upgrade it to a four-way and not just upgrade the light itself.
Right.
How are we going to get the miracle of getting a crossing in right there?
Justin's persuasive. At this point, we don't know, but we, this is step one of it, and then we'll start working on.
We got to get the approval first, before I can work on it to get more information for you guys.
Any more questions? Anybody? Hey, do I have a motion to approve Item Ten?
So moved.
Is that Commissioner Reardon? I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett Tapley? Commissioner Tapley, sorry. Okay, can we put up the vote, please?
Commissioner Paul?
Aye.
And motion passes seven-zero. Okay, well, this is our last meeting of the year, so I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I am looking forward to maybe some time off. Just bring me all the babies. I'll be happy, and I can't wait for them to get here. So Merry Christmas, everybody. Does anybody have anything else?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I just wanted, I didn't get a chance to jump in during Commissioner comments, but I just wanted to thank each and every one of you that's currently on the commission and that I've served with in the past. This is my last meeting as an official commissioner for the city of Alamogordo, but it's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you. You guys have done a great job. Look forward to seeing you guys continue to do the good work of Alamogordo. It's not always easy, but I know that you've got a solid group of people there on the commission, so I just want to thank each and every one of you. And I want to especially thank Sharon McDonald. She was the one who had made a nomination for me three years ago to be appointed to the seat that I hold now. And so I just want to thank Mayor Protem McDonald for that leap of faith, and just thank each and every one of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and good luck to you. Commissioner Paul, for those of you who don't know, I can't imagine nobody knows, but for those of you who don't know, is going to be serving us in the New Mexico State Senate. And we're very fortunate that we do have one senator and one representative right here in our city. Of course, we also have Jim Townsend, who I can't say enough good things about him. He's absolutely phenomenal, so. Thank you to that. I'm sure we'll be calling on you many times. And it will certainly help us that you have served as a commissioner, because I think you, that experience will help you to understand what our needs are at the state. So thank you for that, and come back on the fourteenth. We do have something for you. So with that, if there is nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
He could not wait. A second from Commissioner Tapley, and we are adjourned. Merry Christmas, everybody.